Lisa, if you could take the roll.
Councilmember Thorson.
Here.
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 Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Here. Motion to adopt the agenda?
I'm with your honor.
By Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? We won't have the city manager updates. He will not be here tonight. So we'll just do the A and B topics. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The agenda is adopted. And our first topic is the zoning code text amendments to implement the 2040 comprehensive plan. Eric, are you doing that?
I will take the lead on this.
Okay.
I'm not going to give my entire presentation that I did at the last meeting. I've made a couple of slides for the parking from the curb line that Councilmember Cole brought up, and I made a couple of slides for recreational vehicles and how those could be parked that Mayor you had brought up. From there, and we can go into any other topics, but from there, I'll share my screen, and we can briefly go into those slides here. So just quickly, just repeat. Hope that's on your screens. The city...
No.
Nope. I don't know if I can wait for...
That's not on any of these.
There.
There it is.
I presented this background the last time, but just quickly why we're doing this. City adopted the 2040 comprehensive plan in December of 2019. The zoning ordinance is required to be amended to comply with the comprehensive plan, and the zoning ordinance update process started with the planning commissioner in April of 2020. So to address the parking that Councilmember Cole brought up, this is the current ordinance as it stands. It says that parking within the vehicles, or sorry, parking within the driveways, any vehicle parked in that driveway may not extend or encroach upon an alley, street right of way, or public sidewalk. So this is just an example, but pretty typical for North St. Paul. The distance from the garage to the property line, which is the beginning of the right of way, is about 30 feet. And then the right of way is about 15 feet. So with the current ordinance, you need to be, in most cases, about 15 feet from the curb line. So that's the measurement. The proposed ordinance, because it's pretty difficult to go out and determine where the right of way line is, particularly different rights of way such as South Avenue is a wider right of way, and it's harder to tell. So we decided, as the planning commission, I guess, decided, to come up with a measurement that would then be that setback, easy to measure from the curb line. So the proposal is that it needs to be at least 10 feet from the curb or right of way, but it still cannot extend into a sidewalk. So in most cases, people will actually get another five feet to park within their driveway with this amendment. The discussion by some of the planning commission members of why to keep 10 feet is, you know, if it's a larger vehicle, a van, or the like, trying to have a sight distance, particularly if you're backing out to see what kind of cars are traveling on your street, they thought 10 feet was still the right distance. But in almost every case, this is going to allow people more of their driveway to park upon. And it also makes for code enforcement a lot easier to determine and measure. So the second issue that was brought up at the last meeting is about recreational vehicles. And these are both recreational vehicles, but we basically have recreational vehicles, and we have large recreational vehicles. The language at top describing recreational vehicles is borrowed almost completely from how the state defines recreational vehicles when they're licensing. And so for large recreational vehicles, that's a recreational vehicle 36 feet in length or longer, or a boat that has over 25 feet in length. So to talk again about if it was just a recreational vehicle, so essentially a 35-foot-long vehicle, that could be parked in the driveway with no limit, because in most cases, there is about 35 feet of space between the garage and where the 10-foot setback from the curb would be. But for large recreational vehicles, which are 36 feet or longer, which in almost every case would not be able to fit in a driveway and still maintain that 10-foot setback, they're only allowed to park for a period no longer than 72 hours. So those were the two issues that were raised at the last meeting. There's a lot of other material. So with that, I would open it up to any conversations that the city council may have.
Eric, thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, that was, my question was, I believe the setbacks in the development that we're in, all of our drivers are only 30 feet.
Mm-hmm.
So that was, so going forward, what are we going to do? And I also recognize there's other driveways in other parts of town that don't have the 35 feet that was stated during your explanation. So what are we going to do from an ordinance standpoint? How are we going to enforce it? I don't think I have 10 feet from the end of my truck to the curb.
Well, you know, the enforcement answer is this is going to be easier to enforce. You measure from the curb, it's either 10 feet or not. This is a proposed ordinance amendment. If the city council is uncomfortable that 10 feet is too egregious, too far, then you always have the ability to make it zero, pick another number that makes more sense. You know, many side-loaded garages probably do not have this length on a corner lot. Alley's, garages off the alley probably do not have this length. But, you know, there, you know, we might be able to be creative on those solutions. Most of the driveways we've been working with for driveway permits and the like, where it's in the middle of the block and comes off the street, the main street in front, they're typically that 30 feet in length. But this is a proposed amendment. You have the ability to propose a different measurement if you wish. Okay?
Thank you.
Councilmember Thorson?
Yeah, I share that same concern, because I don't, there's all sorts of different-sized driveways throughout town. There's several on McKnight Road, in fact, that I don't even know if they're 10 feet. Some in my neighborhood that appear to be shorter than 10 feet itself. And I guess that was my question, is how are we going to address these few that it's going to essentially make it impossible to, for them to park in their driveway?
Well, if I may, I'm not sure if you're done with your statement or not.
Yeah, go ahead.
You know, in the case of you have a 10-foot driveway, there probably isn't much of a solution. You know, a typical parking stall is either 18 or 19 feet long. I mean, that's the typical length of a vehicle. But in the cases where you have a driveway that is 20 feet in length or longer, you know, then we should consider what is the right measurement. But this was for, this arrived at for two reasons. One, simplicity of code enforcement and talking with residents. Instead of people trying to figure out where the right of way is, which varies in many parts of town, now this is a clear measurement. The thought of the 10 feet was when somebody's backing out, you know, where they're sitting as a driver, their vehicle's going to start to get into the streets if it happens to be their neighbor has a car right there. But in this example, you probably don't have as many issues. These aren't driveways where they're, well, no, none of these in this example, the driveways are like basically next to each other. That's really where that case comes in. Where you have a case like this, where the driveways are all kind of on the same side, you have that extra distance to have that extra vision. So I would concede that the 10-foot was probably looking at the worst-case scenario and trying to regulate that worst-case scenario. But like I said, I would just encourage that we have a measurement from the curb, so it's easy for code enforcement. But if you feel more comfortable that it's five feet, that it's two feet, that it's zero feet, just can't extend over the curb, that is your authority to determine what that distance should be.
And I guess the whole reason for this is that the concern is that, well, if you have a vehicle protruding into the right of way, in most cases, like a sidewalk as well, and especially if it's a truck with a hitch, it poses not only a safety hazard to people who are jogging, or running, or biking, but also a sight hazard for people that are driving by. And is that specifically stated in this ordinance update is to, you know, this is looking to address, you know, the blocking of a sidewalk, or the impeding of a sight line for safety concerns? And then, you know, if addressing that allows us to have leeway, where, you know, maybe if someone files a complaint and it's, you know, they're inside of the 10 feet, but it's eight feet, and there's still enough room to see, I mean, is that kind of how these, I mean, it's not like we're going to be sending people out to start with a tape measure or yardstick and putting tickets on the window.
Well, Councilmember Thorson, yeah, I think both of those examples are already addressed. In both of these cases, this is the current ordinance, it says that it cannot extend or encroach into a public sidewalk. In the proposed language, it still says you can't extend into an alley or a sidewalk.
We're just leaving, we're just adding the 10 feet for code enforcement's sake of saying, hey, we measured.
Yep, yep.
You're two feet off the curb, maybe you got some extra space, just make sure when you're parking, you're parking to meet this 10-foot line, which I think is the case in the IUP that we're going to be considering, is that he's got the room, it's just for whatever reason, he's choosing to park his truck right at the edge of the driveway, which is causing sightline issues and difficulty for code enforcement, because previously, that 15-foot measurement was the right of way, but that's the street right of way, but that could be different throughout the city. And so our code enforcement kind of had no starting point, where this is now more universal to say, well, it's the curb line.
Correct.
And even absent of, there's some areas in town that don't have a curb, but it's clearly, you know, the asphalt where meets the yard, you know, there's not an asphalt curb or a concrete curb, so they would use that part where the street meets the yard. That's technically the curb.
Yeah, so we're saying curb or roadway. So the roadway would apply when there's not a curb. And then to your previous question of like corners, we both have regulations on where driveways can be located, and we have regulations about the site triangle for those corners. Those still apply, no matter what this gets changed to.
Councilmember Wong?
Eric, can you speak to what the range is from the minimum to, I guess, maximum distance it would be for safety purposes? Is that, you know, five? I mean, I hear that commission said 10, but what is the range that anyone can safely, you know, park their car?
So, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to give some analogies, I guess, not a legal answer to go and try to answer. And Morgan's going to help me here. Morgan and I have worked together for years. So this here would be kind of a typical 30 or 32-foot-wide road. The travel lanes are typically 11 or 12 feet wide. The curb is meant for parking area. Where, and which is most locations, where cars are allowed to park on the street, that probably would be almost more of a vision hazard than what's parked in the driveway. If we knew every house was lined up like this, where, you know, there's 50, 45 feet between the driveways, probably not an issue. We just know there's a lot of areas in town where, you know, then the next house, the garage backs up to that, and it might only be 10 feet between the two. And if you have a large truck on one, it's hard to see past that. But with that, I'll turn it to City Engineer Dowley.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so I would just add, when you're talking about safety and you're talking about obstructions within the right of way, whether that's a parked vehicle in a driveway, or a tree, or a mailbox, or a sign, it's going to highly depend on the geometrics of the road, right? And so the perception of sight lines of something protruding into the right of way, but not quite up to the curb, whatever that distance is, five feet, or 10 feet, or zero feet, if you're going around a curve, you're going to have a much harder time seeing whatever, oncoming traffic, pedestrians, a bicyclist on the edge of the road, whatever. And so that can be of concern. So I don't think there's a straight answer, unfortunately, and I'm not trying to, you know, sidestep it, but there's not a straight answer, or a table, or a chart to go to and say that 10 feet is the right number, or five feet is the right number. As City Planner Zwaiber pointed out, it's certainly within the council's purview to work within the context of the recommendation, maybe, and modify that. And then maybe monitor, you know, code enforcement and staff can certainly see if 10 feet works, or maybe we get complaints on that, or maybe, and then maybe that can come back to council and make a slight tweak. You don't want to make changes to ordinance willy-nilly, that's kind of cumbersome. But that option always is available to be able to, you know, react and adjust. I think from my standpoint, from an engineer's standpoint, and Eric and I did discuss this prior to bringing it to council, 10 feet seems reasonable. It might not fit every instance, and certainly I don't think the city's interested in writing code violations for somebody that doesn't really have any options. But 10 feet is a reasonable starting point, and I think allows for some ability to clear some of the sight lines if you are on a curve and you're trying to see around a corner, which there's going to be several of those throughout the city where driveways are coming in on a curve, and it's not going to be the same on the inside of the curve or the outside of the curve. But you got to, you got to pick a number, right? And so I'd be comfortable with something less, like five feet, I think, is reasonable. Zero feet might be something I would not recommend. But that's my two cents, I think, in terms of just kind of context. Because your point in terms of it being a safety-related item, that's important. And you pointed out, you know, whether it's a pedestrian, or somebody bonking into, you know, a vehicle, or anything sticking out into the right of way, it's really the city's right of way to manage, right? And that's why we have codes and ordinance to be able to allow or disallow certain things, whether it's utility installation, or parked cars. And, but in terms of enforcement, you know, I think, I would imagine the city is also not interested in going around patrolling, looking to write tickets. If there's a complaint, or a concern, or something to look into, I think that would be, you know, reactive code enforcement, certainly. And so again, the 10-feet recommendation, I think, is reasonable to start with, certainly could be monitored. But I also would be comfortable with something less, like five feet, if council wanted to go there.
Thank you for that.
I mean, I've got to have a starting point. I'm comfortable with 10 feet, because I firmly believe that City North St. Paul's not going to drive around and measure. So we can start someplace. My assumption is if you've got, you know, in my situation, and especially, you know, to your point, you throw a trailer hitch onto the back end, I bet I've got seven feet, eight feet. You're going to, you're going to notice that the car's up to the front of the garage, and there's nothing else you can do. So I recognize that, and I'm comfortable with the 10 feet.
One other comment, because when I, this weekend, I was walking my dog down Margaret, and there was a driveway that was kind of shorter, and the one car was protruding out in the sidewalk, and the other wasn't. And, you know, just thinking of how like in the fall, when we're sending street sweepers out, and there's cars parked, they have to go around it, and that section doesn't get swept. Or in the winter, we have a no parking rule, because if it snows, and cars are on the street, we can't clear the street alley-to-alley. That might be another instance to where, you know, if people are parking and it's protruding into the sidewalk, it's going to probably prevent someone from clearing the snow. So there's reasons why we're doing this, and it's certainly not to just start a new enforcement. This seems to be less restrictive, and I agree, yeah, we have to, we have to pick a number. I'm comfortable with the 10 feet. I think, you know, people need to understand, too, that we're doing this to be more flexible, not to create a problem, because that's always a concern, too, that we're going to modify our ordinance to solve one problem, but then it could create new problems elsewhere. And that's not the intent here at all. And just so people understand, that's why this change is taking place. And I totally agree. If, for whatever reason, 10 feet doesn't seem to work, we can always revisit this and look at modifying it to eight or five. But even that is still, I think we get the picture here. It's just to have something clear and forcible to say, you can't park right at the curb line. You can't park covering the sidewalk, is kind of the theme here, so.
That's a problem living in an older community. When, back in the 40s and 30s, we didn't have the 30-foot trailers, and 35-foot trailers, and the big trucks, and the, all the toys that they...
But in the 70s, they did have 40-foot Cadillacs, so.
Right. So, anything else? I think there were some other items that we had that we wanted to look at?
Mayor, the other one was the recreational vehicles. From my notes from the last meeting, I think your quick read was that it was only a two-hour period, that a large recreational vehicle could be parked. You know, just wanted to clarify, it is a 72-hour period, so they do get a three-hour, or a three-day period, you know, to load and unload, but it's also for ease of enforcement of, you know, if you, if code enforcement goes out on Thursday, and it's still there on Monday, we know that it's too long, so.
Well, usually they come back in the week, and they're parking Sunday night back there again, so Monday, no, I'm just kidding. So I understand that. My concern was that people are picking it up from the rental storage units, and dropping them at night, and it's two hours, so. Thank you. Any other questions in regards to the amendments? If not, we'll move ahead to the, oh, go ahead.
I do, I didn't know how much you prepared.
That's all I prepared, because...
Talk to me about cottage development. What, how does, what's a college, cottage development, and how does that differ from a duplex, or a side-by-side, or whatever the...
One of the largest features about a cottage development, and there probably could be other ways to do it, but the idea of a cottage development is that it's almost like a condo. You own the, you own your building, you own the airspace, and the rest of the community is commonly owned. So when you don't have a yard of your own, what's the required open space? What's the minimum size of required open space? How to deal with utilities, that kind of thing. So could it be a duplex? Yes. But the way our duplex ordinance is written, it's pretty much for a larger lot in a single-family neighborhood, and you're just putting two units on it, where a cottage development is meant more purposefully for multiple units. I don't know that it's the only reason why, but the recent development, I think it was off of 7th, that there was a cul-de-sac with about 14 twin homes on it. You know, we got into issues of drainage utility easements and other things that could have been probably resolved better if it was you owned the unit and we regulated the common space. So it's to provide a little bit more flexibility, but it's not intended for individually-platted lots. It's the large, the few, but the larger lots that exist out there today that could be done better as a community than trying to divide out individual lot lines and try to create lots. So that's the intent.
Okay, because it was something I, cottage development was a term I wasn't familiar with. It led me to the other questions of, how does that change the setback, the percentage of the lot that the property can fill from a square footage standpoint? So probably not a whole lot of that changes?
Right. And it's more we measure for the community as a whole than individual lots. But yes, in aggregate, that should not change. And there might be opportunities where instead of everybody having a small front yard, having a communal yard for four or six units that, you know, is the size or larger of what most people would have for a backyard, might be an advantage over just drawing property lines, draw property lines, and by reducing setbacks, you lose the usefulness of it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Nothing? Nothing else?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Good, 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 good. All right. Move on to the utility rate study, and I believe, Kyle?
Welcome, Kyle.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, yeah, as part of our strategic planning process, city staff would like to request to go over proposals for utility rate studies. And this would be in conjunction with, we're developing a 10-year CIP plan right now, and this would be part of that funding puzzle piece. And the last studies we have were in 2017, and some of those assumptions and, assumptions and plans are a little outdated, and this would just update that. Staff would plan to engage multiple vendors to ensure fair cost and a review of their experience, along with a long-term funding plan for the utilities' capital needs. This would recommend appropriate cash level balances, rate designs, including, and it would include a flexible planning tool that in. So with this 10-year plan, maybe in 2026, we move something up that was in 2028 into 2026, move something back, or we change the scope of a project. We should be able to do that on the fly, and just be able to plan a little better. If you want, just like open it up for questions?
Kyle, so we did the study in 2017. Would we use the same, I guess I'm, use the same company to do it?
We would go out for like an RFP process to, yeah, just make sure we get a low cost, and we're, we feel good about the experience.
I was hoping that we could, because we had one company do it, you know, if they could just update it? I don't know if that is...
We can for sure look into that. I think Ellers, and that would for sure be one of the ones we would contact.
Because I know it's not cheap to do.
Well, yeah, I think the price range would be 15 to 30, but we don't get an exact number.
Right, right. Any questions for Kyle?
I'm just, yeah, I had the same question about the cost, and, but I'm glad to hear that, you know, part of this is that fund balance question that we've kind of have struggled with addressing for years, that that's going to be part of this. I think that kind of guides some of the decisions on, you know, where we need to be at, and like you say, that we need the flexibility to make modifications. Or I think in the past, we've done kind of larger projects, and I think at least, you know, discussions seem to be we should look at scaling some of them back. But I guess that, I mean, is that sort of the things that they're going to look into with this rate study to kind of address concerns about costs of projects and size of scope projects as well?
Well, so right now, with this CIP plan we're making, we're doing with, you know, city engineers' input, and, you know, we'll bring it to you for approval. So whichever projects, I mean, whichever projects we want to go forward with, those are the ones we'll have to pay for. And, you know, with the utility rate study, we could take a look at, hey, if we plan to do this, this is where we'd have to issue debt, or if we're not comfortable with what it is, maybe we try for more grants or other sources of funding. Yeah, thank you.
Another hat.
Here you go.
The city manager asked me to be here just to add a little bit of information. So certainly nothing that the engineer prepares, but I've been involved with several of these efforts over the years, this city and other cities as well, too. And the city council approves the capital improvements, like the CIP, that go into the front end of doing this analysis from a fund generation standpoint. With all your enterprise funds, whether that's sewer, water, or surface water are the main ones that we're concerned about, separate from, you know, street funds, which are either state aid or general tax levy, so it's a kind of a different animal. But the enterprise funds are supposed to fund themselves. They're supposed...
They're supposed to be like a net-zero balance kind of thing. So your costs year over year in terms of operations, but also capital investments, like if we want to invest some capital in a new water tower, for example, is something that's been out there forever, right? And that's very expensive. Those costs and that plan approved by the council, whether formally or at least you're like, okay, let's analyze this at least in the study, that will provide the direction for the financial consultant to provide, again, that analysis. At the end of the outcome here, there'll be recommendations to the city council. We recommend in order to fund this plan, your rates should, it's up to the council to agree or disagree and adopt, but your rates should increase or stay steady, or potentially they give you a kind of a 10-year plan. And again, it's up to the council to weigh current economic conditions, whatever other factors are at play, and whether they want to follow those recommendations or not. But at least you have, by a financial expert, a plan with which to, you know, react to and potentially use as a guidepost, plus or minus, depending on, again, economic conditions, right? So in terms of evaluating what projects or the size and scope of projects, or how many projects of what type, water versus sanitary sewer, that kind of thing. In addition to, it's really important to take into account the operations and what's the level of service that we're providing to the community in terms of jetting our sewers or fixing water main breaks or day-to-day stuff that Public Works has to do year over year, that all needs to be folded in there. And then at the end of the effort, you'll have basically a picture of what we should do to be able to maintain that. And then that will also help the council react to, well, maybe the initial take on the capital improvement plan was a little too much, and we need to dial that back, which the staff can...
And I think that's kind of what happened in our past one.
Yep, yeah, exactly.
Rates were just getting...
And as Kyle pointed out, the current, even though it's not, the current direction, I guess, of the CIP is certainly different, and I would say whatever was used in those past studies by Ellers, and I can't remember if Springstead did one or not, but at any rate, those past utility rate studies are out of date at this point. It doesn't take long for it to go out of date when you kind of adjust direction, and that's normal. It is expensive, but it is, I guess, in my experience, pretty valuable to have some sort of guidepost to work off of as opposed to just kind of guessing. When it's time to re-adopt your rates or set your rates at the beginning of every year, you can guess at what the right number is. You know, it's good to know that at least you can keep the lights on, you can keep repairing water main breaks, you can keep doing whatever projects you think is the appropriate level of capital investment within the community. So it does help to answer those kinds of things.
And just to go along kind of what Morgan said, like, the water tower, I think it's in one of the plans that I put as support. I think it was at like 2.2 or 2.5 million, and now we're looking at, could be like 3.6.
If not more.
I'd still like to have an opportunity to present that to council, but yeah, several options for council to consider, yeah.
And then we go on to city water supply, go on to the, you know, because of the White Bear Lake things, you know? So things could change.
Yeah, we won't talk about that.
We won't talk about that, no. Well, good. Thank you, Kyle. Any questions for Kyle or Morgan?
Could follow up the useful life of these studies, I think you kind of touched on, but is it to be expected if we don't change, is it four or five years? I mean, I'm looking at the numbers from this last one, and they had projected out to 2021. But is that just to be expected, just when you do a study like this?
Just my experience, I think that on average, it's maybe if everything kind of stays relatively status quo once every 10 years or so. But things have been changing rapidly in North St. Paul as a community with a lot of different factors, right? Not just changing CIPs, but we've got an influx of households and, you know, and property values are changing pretty rapidly everywhere. And so, and I'm not a financial person, but, you know, the tax picture for not only the constituents, but also in terms of the property tax revenue for the city is changing rapidly over time. So, you know, more often than every 10 years, I guess, would be expected, I wouldn't be surprised if you're doing it. And the last one by Ellers was only surface water, right? They did not do water and sewer?
Ah, the one I saw, I saw water and sewer.
They did, okay. So they covered it all. But it is a good opportunity for a reset, and I think there is value in terms of, again, taking a look at your financial position right now. And you can think of that study as an investment in knowing, providing a clear picture for the next 10 years.
And outside of just giving us a better idea of where we need to be and where the rates need to be, is this also used as kind of like when we go to do bonding, do they look at, well, did they do a rate study and who did they use? And are they following the rate study? Because it's one thing to do it, but if we don't follow it, is that kind of coming to play when we go to do bonding and things like that, or?
I don't think it's a requirement of going out for bonds or utility bonds, not as far as I know.
So rating-wise, we could, you know, disclose that in our rating interview, and, you know, it would possibly, they love to see budgeting, they love to see planning, wouldn't hurt.
Thank you both. I think that this is going to be really helpful for us, especially with all the development and the potential water towers coming our way. I think it'll really provide the details and the data that we need. And like you had said, things have changed substantially, and I think we'll continue seeing that. And plus, we see inflation today at like 5% building costs going up. So I think that it's pretty critical for us if we're heading in that direction to consider. So thank you.
Thank you. And I assume, Morgan, that things have changed in the last year or two in regards to a lot of this? I mean, I know this is a whole, this is a whole topic of economics and all that.
The construction industry is, I won't say upside down, but it is, it's probably an understatement to say that it's significantly different. And as far as local government is concerned, the public bidding climate is all over the place. I've seen really competitive, great bids come in. You know, North St. Paul doesn't have any going on right now, but other communities, excellent bids, very competitive, you know, many more bidders than average in terms of, you know, qualified contractors. And then, you know, just a month or six weeks prior, you know, similar community, totally different situation, where two contractors and, you know, significantly over engineer's estimate, right? And so, and that's unexpected. Part of it has been shortages in terms of materials, like plastic pipe continues to be an issue, PVC pipe, in terms of utility work is a significant deal right now. But also labor and trucking and shipping is affecting everything. You know, if you, talking to the QuickTrip guys who are getting started on their site right now, and the project manager there made a statement along the lines of, if you have your commercial driver's license and you have a truck and a trailer and you're not making a lot of money right now, you're not doing something right, because there's a shortage of being able to deliver goods and materials from point A to point B, especially in the construction industry. So hopefully that normalizes over time, but I think we're maybe a little bit fortunate right now to not be kicking off significant city projects right now during these times, knowing that, you know, the prices that we have locked in for the contracts that we're wrapping up right now came in relatively favorably, and we're able to wrap those up without having to launch something right now where it's a little bit of a guessing game.
Yep. It's crazy, crazy times. So we, city manager's not here, operational updates. I know Carrie, if you can, because you've been in the construction meetings and all that, and maybe just briefly give us an update on maybe the downtown Seventh Street project, because I know they're working hard down there.
Absolutely. The construction downtown, the construction downtown is going along really well. We were very concerned about the high temperatures we had last week and the impact on our concrete, and that's working really well. We delivered hand signs to all of our businesses to post to direct their traffic, their customers around their entrances. When I walked through the site today, the pad ramps are still out, those are quite intricate to get those all formed and to flow in with the rest of the sidewalk. So you notice that the pad ramps on the corner are not done complete. They finished ripping out all the planters in front of the post office, that work was done today. And then after going back and forth with WSB on our sidewalk plans, we decided to pull out the seat benches. We just had trouble finding the right configuration where we could get storm removal equipment through there and giving enough access space for ADSSable ramps to get people into the post office. And they became more of a hindrance than a help. So last week, those were pulled from the plans. So what's going to happen is we're going to have a nice, big, broad sidewalk space there instead of, you know, permanent benches that are going to get banged.
Iron benches and that type of...
Correct. So what we're anticipating is possibly even taking some of our park benches, because we can affix those to the sidewalk, and then when it's time for winter and snow removal, we can pick them up and take them out of there. So we think not only for the more flexibility that we'll have in the downtown, it's going to save a ton of money on the project because all of those seat benches needed special rebar, and that would have also slowed down because, again, like Morgan spoke to, some of the construction delays in getting our hands on the materials that we need. So the rest of the sidewalks should be done later this week. There still is some stormwater fixtures that need to go in between the Amcon building and North St. Paul Chiropractic on that side of the building. And then when that stuff gets done, then the alley will get paved, and that's something we're waiting, we've been waiting for a long time. There's a lot of different elevations that go with that alley and how it blends into the Amcon parking lot and how it blends into the neighboring apartment next door. And WSB's spent hours and hours trying to figure out the best way to fix those grades as to not take away parking, and yet still have a safe, plowable road. And, you know, that alley's just been a real mess for a long time, and I personally can't wait to have it paved. It'll be a nice thing to get wrapped up. So that's kind of what's going on with the downtown. We've been meeting weekly, and as of this Thursday, we're going to start meeting on-site again, because we're really getting to the final finishing touches. And I just can't say enough for our contractors, how they have worked, especially on the east side of Margaret. A lot of those buildings there don't have rear entrances, and so what they, we found out what businesses were open, what their hours were, and those crews got in there and pounded out those sidewalks so that those businesses could open and they could safely walk on their sidewalks. So I'm really grateful, especially to Mark Lynch from WSB for coordinating that. The other thing I think most people wouldn't know by the naked eye is all the hand troweling work that had to go into there, because these sidewalks are going into the existing property lines in our buildings downtown. And there was hand troweling because, like, you know, no house is perfectly square, and buildings that have been in our downtown, you know, since the late 1800s, early 1900s, they're not exactly straight lines anymore either. So there was quite a bit of artistry, and they really did a beautiful job of blending that new construction into the existing sidewalks.
As they can be ready for the car show.
Betcha. The plantings probably won't, and that's the biggest reason. Some people wonder, why did we start along Margaret and not do Seventh? But, you know, they wanted to work their way around so that we could get the plantings in. So that'll be the next step that will come after we get this last batch. And then just so everybody's clear, the other side of Seventh won't get done until later this fall, when the Amcon building is done. They've got their siding, they've got decks that have to be hung, there's still some heavy exterior work that needs to be done there, and we don't want to damage sidewalks with equipment. So very early on in the project, we decided that we would just let Amcon finish their project, and then later this fall, summer, fall, depending on how their construction schedule goes, then they'll go in and they'll finish the rest of the sidewalk there.
I did have a question in regards, people are asking, you go up the hill on Seventh Street, why, why does it look like it's tilted a little bit? You know, the planters...
I don't know, I'll have to try that.
And I, but I know the answer. Morgan, if you want to...
Bail me out, Morgan.
You're coming up, but I do know the answer now, which was, it makes sense.
You brought up, Mr. Mayor, something I wish was addressed like two months ago, which we talked about. So the lumpiness on the road, let's characterize it like that, right?
I'm talking about the angle of the planters.
Oh.
That's one, but yes.
So the angle of the planters, there's nothing we can do about that. We, so not every road in North St. Paul is exactly symmetric, asymmetrical. Sometimes one side of the road is higher than the other, especially on a road that wide, like Seventh Avenue. We do need to design everything in 3D to make sure that we don't have to build too many retaining walls or have too much excavation in people's front yards. Obviously, there was some of that on that project, but we tried to minimize that by picking the elevation of each side of the road to try to make it as balanced as possible. In some situations where you have a center median, it's going to become apparent that that is, again, not a perfectly symmetrical center portion of the road. Sometimes they're tilted, and you do see that around center medians with left-turn lanes at signalized intersections, for example. Sometimes they're not flat, they're twisted. So that's the explanation. That's not rectifiable, but that's by design, again, so that we don't have a road that's too egregiously impacting on one side of the road as a retrofit project as opposed to the other side of the roads. We try to match that. As far as the lumpiness of the road, so that too, you said, that is actually wintertime protection that is now completely out of date. Here it is, June, and 95 degrees out. We did think that we had a commitment from the contractor to mill that out. That's the normal procedure. We put that asphalt in to protect the edges of the new concrete from snowplows through the winter, and then they mill that out when they do the final layer of asphalt. That was planned and scheduled to be done a couple weeks ago, and we've experienced a delay from the contractor, which I don't have a good explanation for at this time, but we're working with the contractor to get that done as soon as possible. So we hope to have that milling and paving, especially the main line on Seventh Avenue there, done before the end of this month. And then we have a little bit of extra work on some of those overlay streets, which would be Fourth Ave between First Street and Second Street, and then also Second Street going north up to the dead end there, the T-intersection by the Frontage Road. So that'll be the last little piece of the project that remains at this time. So we expect full completion this summer for the rest of that project.
Since you're here, if you don't mind, is there any questions from Morgan on updates on projects? Nope. Thank you. Appreciate it. Carrie, I suppose, any more on projects? You're good?
Unless anybody has questions.
Okay. I don't think anything, so we don't have no other business, so any other business? If not, motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Thorson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, meaning adjourn. Carrie, is that enough time for you to get everything switched over?